Good evening all, I call the September work session of order supervisors to order. Ms. Branch, if you could call roll please.
Here.
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 And gentlemen, we have an adopted amended agenda this evening. Any comments or questions about the changes? We have a couple deletions of the topics, but other than that, I don't think there's anything major changed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll give adoption to the amended agenda we have.
Second, we have a motion on second, any further discussion? Ms. Branch?
Hi.
Bye.
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 Hi. First up this evening, we have Mr. Fred Pearson to give us an update on reassessment. We're on the downhill. I hope.
We're getting close to the end. You can expect only your resident property about fifty percent increase. Homes less than half million were beat about sixty-five percent increase. We are, with that entry, we have just a little bit left to do. We have some overrides in the system. We have to take off about two thousand of those. We sent out income expense letters to properties over four hundred thousand that are commercial properties. See, we still have the commercials to do and get in. We've got about four hundred parcels of commercial. I've reviewed most of those, so we have to get them in the system, set up the rates and what have you, so we'll be working on that. We should have that done by the end of the month. I've also visited West Rock, working on that, and we've also had Karina, one thousand, what they pictured on that. And also Nessu Karina, she also was on that site visiting. That's pretty much it. We're gonna be wrapping everything up. We also want to make sure that when we finish, we get everything verified, that we put everything on the internet. Where, with our website, it'd be on the notice where anybody, the whole property, rent card, all our calculations. All the buildings would be there for the property owner to see. And we're gonna make it real easy for them to access. You can just put in a name and port it off, or you can put in a map number. That should be easy for them to get to. They can check there if anybody else is in the account. But anyway, we're looking at, you know, still sending notices throughout the latter part of October of this year. So I know that we're gonna give people three ways to appeal. They can call and make an appointment. They'll be right there, be an in-person appointment. They can, if someone would prefer, then we just give them a call. We can set up a time and date. We'll call them back about their assessment. Or if they want to email us information to consider, we can, we can do it that way too. But that's about it. We're getting closer to the end. Just doing unedited reports and getting as close as we can. And my objective is to listen to every property owner and make sure everybody is preparing that for our assessment.
Gentlemen?
Mr. Pearson, if a citizen requests a revisit, will you do that?
We have to do it. Keep in mind, we do not make interior inspections of homes. There could be some things that they would like for us to look at, from outside, inside. If it's an interior inspection, I probably need to get someone from the county to go with me to do that. It shouldn't be a problem. I get Steve to go with me.
I'll do that.
But yeah, we, you know, anything that comes up, any way that we can help the property owner, we want to do so. And I'm gonna listen to their concern. If I have something wrong, I'm gonna correct it.
For the notices, we had discussed some time ago, having a cover letter of some sort explaining the board's unanimous holding that we're gonna equalize the rate coming into the next, the next year.
We can do that. We can, we can put that in the notice too.
Okay.
But you need a separate sheet going there. It should not be a problem.
However, we, we do it, and I think the board would like to communicate it though with the notices as they go out. As opposed to then trying to catch up to that after the notices are already being. Alright, good. Otherwise, yeah, we're looking forward to getting.
Approximately when should we be, start looking at a board of equalization? Getting that together, trained now?
Usually after I finish my work, which we're gonna send notices out latter part of October, hold here in October and November. And I'll sign the progress somewhere close to the end of November, first of December. We may take another look at the sales. You know, we're in a changing market out there. If they keep raising interest rates, I admit that real estate values, we have sales to share with things. We may need to make some changes. But anyway, we're gonna follow it right after I've signed the book on that. But that's about it. Any more questions?
That's great. Thanks very much.
Have a nice evening. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, VDOT update, Mr. Lee McKnight.
Alright, good evening, members of the board. Just give you all a quick update of what's going on in VDOT land. We do have two projects that we've completed, the Route thirty-three thirty crosswalk repair. That is done. It's complete. Looks great. Please don't ask me to do anymore with it.
Let's see if it holds up. If it holds up, I like it the way it is.
It, it was a, it was a long process, but it turned out very well. I, I believe. It looks great. The Route six hundred turn lane addition at Route three sixty, that is complete pending striping. There is some additional striping that still needs to be put down. That's being scheduled as we speak. Some supervisor requests, Upshaw Road review for speed and some, some maintenance items that is currently under review. And then Alitz Road, that is also going to be under review, Route six fifty-five. Some maintenance operation highlights, I did want to mention. The primary mowing, the second round of primary mowing cut was complete today. They, they moved pretty quickly, but it looks great. Just wrote it this evening to take a look at it. The secondary mowing cycle will begin shortly. It follows the primary cycle, so that will begin this week, I'm anticipating. There was sign repair countywide, unpaid road maintenance continues, potholes, patching. Mr. Moran asked for some data in terms of what our service request highlights look like. So I pulled in the last month and about a half, the beginning of August, we received a total of fifty-four service requests. We closed sixteen of those, thirty-eight remain open for an average days to close of three. The top five requests were dead animals, potholes, drainage, signs and debris. Dead animals is, that's kind of the trend right now. We're getting into the rut, so that, I would anticipate that too. That would actually go up as we get closer to November. Some upcoming projects that I did want to mention will be brush cutting guardrails. They've been all been sprayed. Sign repairs, day lighting signs countywide, unpaid road maintenance again will continue throughout the county. Continue to potch pothole, potholes, and we do, we will be sweeping for the crab festival down in West Point as well. We're getting ready for snow. I know that sounds weird, it being ninety degrees outside, but it's a never-ending job, so if you know anyone, any contractors that would like to push snow for us, please send it my way. We're always looking for someone else to, to help out with that. And that's all I got from my updates, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I gave you a compliment. Now we're going the other way.
Oh.
Who paved Chelsea Road? That short section there, that is a mess.
Chelsea Road, we were, we had to find a place for the excess asphalt from the thirty-three thirty project. And that, there was an area, we're trying to smooth that out. I'll, I have gotten some complaints about that. I don't know if it made it worse, but it's definitely rough.
It actually went into the bike lane.
Okay.
So it messed that up. So right in that area, really, it's not really safe to ride a bicycle.
Okay.
And I know the whole, the whole bicycle path is not perfect, but the other thing, you said you're gonna sweep Crab Carnival of the bridges. You're gonna do both sides during the last event, they only did one side.
The Elton side?
Yeah. Well, no, I meant, they only did one side of the bridge on the, on the Elton Bridge.
Okay, I'll make sure that they did both sides, but they should be sweeping both sides.
That's what I hope, and they always have. And that's all I got.
Anything in particular? You know, we're in the, the season where we've got a lot of farm equipment moving around, so just be mindful of the shoulder conditions. You know, imposition of limbs out in the roadway that might inhibit their movement, but I don't have anything more specific than that.
Was one of the repairs that was done a low edge pothole at Dabney's Mill on Route three sixty?
Yes, I believe so. Yes, sir.
I received three complaints and I pointed them in the right direction. Also, this isn't in my district, but had an individual ask me about Route six oh seven, that is a dirt road. What, you know, if, is that in any future plan at all to be paid?
Do you mind my ass? Is that flatback?
No, Route six oh seven is right off of Upshaw Road here. You probably know. It used to cut through all the way by Eagles Pond to the Route six hundred. Eagles, Eagles Pond. There's quite a few houses down there.
I'm not aware, but I will double check.
Also, I think probably four or five months ago, I asked you about a traffic count for Brandywine Road. Has anything been scheduled for that?
It has. It has not been completed yet, though.
Okay. And I've had several calls from the people in Timberland Estates. I know that that's not a state maintained road. Advise them to reach out to VDOT, and I don't know whether any of them have. I think they were looking for what had to happen for that to come into the state system. I told them, maybe you could meet them out there. Have, have any of them reached out to you?
Yes, sir, and we have. I have put them in contact with our land use engineer, and there is a meeting scheduled. It might have actually already happened. I'll double check, but he has talked with them about what would need to happen for those roads to be taken in the state system.
That's all.
You know, I just had a, like you said, speed on Upshaw Road, so I guess you've already looked into that, and then I guess the intersection, which is kind of the edge of the two districts, you may have already talked about it, but I know we just redid the thirty-three sixty with all the major improvements, but I think we mentioned something about the light heads. They don't line up with the new lane, so. And what I was wondering, even six hundred has two light heads, when we only have one lane of traffic, but three sixty and thirty have two light heads, and they have three lanes of traffic, so three sixty has four light heads. So I didn't know if y'all had thought about putting an extra light head for each lane because of the two that are ahead. They're sort of a half hazard between the two lanes.
This is on the six hundred approach?
No, well, on the thirty approach.
On the thirty approach.
Thirty-three sixty, right, the big intersection, right, the seven eleven. They have new turn lanes and everything, three new wide lanes. Perfect for getting in and out of there, but the heads don't line up. I mean, I guess they're lining for the straight side, but they're kind of.
You looked at it about a year ago now.
You said that they had, that I had seen them getting done with it, so people were gonna add a head.
They determined that it was okay as well.
People were gonna do something.
Oh, never mind. Well, never mind if you're not gonna do it.
I still, I still would like.
There's a similar in West Point, if you notice on thirty-three, there's actually a similar situation down there. But yes, I've been working with Mr. Moran on that for a while now.
That's all we have. And like I said, just trees and brush. I noticed they did cut grass today, which is good. Although I noticed the county had done our section a little bit, and then y'all finished it up from both ends. Have started cutting down thirty, but I just saw them over. Like I said, it's coming here, so.
That intersection is looking so much better. Thanks to both of you and Mr. Ashcraft and the county folks that are doing it. It's, it's a hundred and eighty degrees. Thank you, Mr. McKnight.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a Sweet Sue's update, Ms. Melanie Beal. This is your first time here?
Yes, sir. Welcome. Thank you. I didn't get to grab everybody before you walked in. Mr. Hodges, I'll never forget you.
Yeah, she already has. She identified me with.
I had all the pictures printed out, Chairman Warren, and it's like, I thought, I can, it's a long story, I got confused. But I tried. But anyway, good evening. I'm Melanie Raphael, and I'm the Dominion Energy External Affairs Manager, long words, for King William. Crystal Bright sends her regards. She's done a great job here, and she really misses y'all and wanted me to pass on her regards. So it's a pleasure and honor to be here this evening. I'd like to give you an update, which we have a slide there, on the current Dominion Energy Sweet Sue project. So jumping down to where it says the permits and process, so we're waiting on a DEQ permitting from them, and we also have the county land disturbance requests that we have here in the county that we're waiting on, but again, we're respectfully have to wait on DEQ for even what y'all approve here in the county has to be approved there. Sherry does a great job, and I appreciate getting to know her through this process. And then if you go down to the anticipated construction dates, we've got, as soon as we get the DEQ storm water permit, the county land disturbance, we can then start construction. We are ready, ready to go. I know this has been a very long, long process for y'all. I've read the history on it, and so thank you for, for patience. But again, we're ready to go once we get the official documents that we can go. And then again, we're still hoping the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-three to have it all turned on and going. So that's our goals. Like that. Are there any questions? Happy to answer.
Seems awfully aggressive. A year for construction. I've, I've forgotten. It's been so long. I've forgotten the schedule.
Well, like I say, we have, I'm not an engineer, have a master's education, bachelor's in international business, but that's what the engineers have said again. And I'm not making excuses, but with all the supply chain, you know, problems everyone's had, we've ordered and all that, so we're hoping all of it comes in the right time, and because everybody's ready to go to, to follow through on what we've committed.
Mr. Carver, it's gonna start getting noisy.
No, well, just a couple of questions. At the last, not the latest meeting, I think it was August eighth, the meeting. When we got here, we had a letter from AMT engineers, and they notified, they went, just a letter of notification that it was two dam repairs on, on the Chenaults property through DCR that was going to be extended. They are projecting a completion date of August the twenty-third, I mean, of August twenty twenty-three. And it seems like Invin Energy, the applicant, they are responsible for that. So I called a contact in DCR, and I asked him if DEQ was aware, you know, that these repairs had not been made. They don't actually communicate back and forth, so, so I didn't actually call DEQ to ask them, are they aware that, I remember the planning commission meetings, there was a lot of concern about runoff. And it was a mention of some of those dams. So my question would be, is, is DEQ aware of the repair that DCR is required for these dams?
Mr. Carver, since I'm a person, if I know something a hundred percent, I'll tell you that. I'm writing them down, and I promise to send a reply in an email as soon as I get that.
So the, the DEQ permit that we're waiting on, is that is it any, any reason for the, the delay, or is that pretty much what the timeline's been?
I spoke with someone today who's in charge with our engineering for the, before the pre-construction of the project. DEQ, they did an upgrade on their storm water management regulations that they have, and, which is all well and fine. We get that in January. Now we have to redesign, basically, not the whole project, but a lot of the project. Because it was designed based on, as we should, the current regs at the time. Now they've been updated and upgraded, so you've got to have a whole, it's all, again, I'm not the engineer, but it's it almost sounds like to me we're almost having a whole new redesign, which is taking a while. What took us a while, then we had to get it back, now the DEQ, we're waiting on them to review everything that we then had to, you know, update. Does that make sense?
I'd just like to know if, if they are aware of this particular project that we've been notified. And also, maybe Steve or someone could contact DEQ and, and ask them if they are aware that this, these dam repairs are going on. That's all.
One quick, so you spoke to DCR, Department of Conservation Resources?
Yes, yes. They told me that, that they don't physically contact back and forth, that this is a physically separate issue, but it sounds like to me it should be somewhat tied in with what DEQ is permitting, because these two dams are on the same prop.
And it's good for the left hand to know what the right hand's doing, so I totally appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, no questions. I'm surprised the state's not totally coordinated on this, but you know that all do well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to King William. Next, we have an update on Bay Aging, Ms. Kathy Wesley.
Well, good evening. I'm Kathy, and I'm very pleased to be here. Thank you for inviting me to talk about aging in King William County. Our three major service divisions are with our Bay Health, our Housing Services and Bay Transit. Our mission is to provide quality services so people can remain independent in the community for as long as possible. And along with that, we want to give folks a choice and range of services. Next slide. I mentioned our strategic plan because in our core goals, we're always looking to improve the quality of life for folks and community awareness of what we offer. We still find people do not know what we have available to them. And usually at no or low cost. Modern technology becomes very important, especially as we're looking for more and more solutions to help offset very expensive personal care. Are there other alternatives that will help us? And financial viability. In mentioning the strategic plan, we are getting ready to start another strategic planning process. And so we welcome from you and all the citizens' input into what areas you may want us to look at. But on the financial vitality and viability, next slide. I would like to say, we think it's very important that we have had, we've taken a real interest in selling our services. Over the last ten years, we focused at selling our health, our prevention services, those things that that preserve health, we sell to insurance companies and to hospitals. If you see here that big blue from twenty twenty-three for the new year, which starts October one, you will see that now seventy percent of our revenue is coming from these sales. Local dollars are still required by regulation, so it's very important what the contributions are. But with an aging community, I thought you would be pleased to know we're doing everything we can to keep the burden off of the governments and off of the citizens. Next. We served over nine hundred unduplicated individuals last year. And I'm not going through all these numbers with you, but they're there for your review. And again, when we look at the numbers of services, over seventeen thousand meals are all the information and education that we provide, or about nine thousand hours in people's homes so they can stay at home. Nine thousand rides. As I said, the people are the most important part. But in these numbers of services, we're really trying to give you, to really stretch the dollars. Next. So in this slide, we're talking about your return on investment. And I do apologize for the typo, and if you didn't see the typo, don't look for it. We'll just pretend it's not there. But anyway, on returning investment, your contribution to us, if you look at that, your seven thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars for aging services, that leveraged well over a quarter million dollars in services. So for every dollar, that's almost thirty-five dollars that comes back to services to your citizens here. In Bay Transit, it's not quite as robust a return, but still it's a positive return that for every dollar invested in public transportation, three dollars are spent here in the county. Safe and affordable housing, I've got to admit, that's really a winner. There was no contribution from the county, but still we're doing housing choice voucher here, voucher here, and some home repair for older citizens. And other returns, I think, are real important to your citizens. It's almost eighty-three thousand dollars paid to us by the VA to help veterans remain in their homes in this county. And four thousand by an insurance company to help people come from hospital to home. And we are making contributions in taxes and water sewer. Next. I will not go through this success story because it's lengthy, and I know the hour is late. Let it suffice to say that one of your citizens was using Bay Transit, actually using the federally funded New Freedom Program and had gone to VCU for an appointment, and there she was in a wheelchair, was stranded because her cell phone guide did not have a number for the driver. And we're very pleased, this driver, Mr. Shackelford, he did not leave her stranded. He did not use any excuse. He worked tirelessly at that building to make sure he identified where she was to get her home. And of course, she and her husband rejoiced at that. Next slide. We just completed a community needs assessment, so we're looking at what the needs in King William are in other areas. And you have full access to that, and I'm more than happy to discuss it with you at length or any pieces of it at length. Next slide. But before we talk about the needs, let me congratulate King William County. You are the only county in our ten county primary service area that is actually expected to increase population during the next decades to come. So you are growing, and I think that's a very positive thing. Next slide. When we look at the community needs assessment, I'm only going to talk about some of the top issues that were identified. And they're not all Bay Aging issues. Our needs assessment looked across the spectrum at what people wanted to report. And here they were saying affordable childcare, in-home care, mental health services, crime response. And other top concerns were for more healthy meals, assisted living options, environmental concerns, domestic violence, and violence, and food insecurity. And the other concerns listed there were not as great, so I won't mention them. Next slide. Transportation was identified as additional needs for transportation, and the respondents were saying. And so these are mainly going to be people who ride on Bay Transit, saying they can use more service. Next slide. And very interesting to us was that the caregivers, do you identify as being a caregiver? And forty-five point five percent of the folks in King William identified as being a caregiver, which was kind of interesting because you have a younger county than many of the surrounding counties. However, my guess would be maybe because they're younger, they are caregivers for people in other areas or even in this county. Alright, next slide. Okay, I'll get points here. I might go through all this data, but again, you have it. The social issues of greatest concern, what it came down to was food insecurity. Next slide. And social issues not adequately addressed in the community there, what was identified was the affordable childcare and mental health services. And finally, gaps in ensuring older adults can age in place. There, it came down to the very top issues being affordable home healthcare and access to healthy meals. Next. So how can we help with this? One, we can always work in partnership with you to identify needs and potential responses to those needs. But when it comes to healthy meals and that food insecurity, there. there, I'm thinking maybe work more with your social services to identify who are these people with needs because we don't have a waitlist, which means we have more capacity. So we just need to find who these folks are and reach out to them. Domestic violence and mental health, as you may guess from the name, Bay Aging, that is not our domain of services, but we're willing to partner with the other agencies that do address this. And finally, an affordable home health there. I have, I don't have an answer. That is a national issue where people want to be able to stay in their home. They need an aide, someone to come in. And even though we've done some increases in wages, we can't attract a workforce. So if you have any solutions for us, we would love to hire the people that are needed in that. And finally, one of the other good solutions is a triad here in King William County. And I'm very pleased, Mr. Ashcraft, out of the gate, has said he wanted to work on that and has started work on that. And we're glad to help. Next slide, final slide. In supporting caregivers, that didn't translate too well, but what you're seeing there is supporting caregivers. And in supporting the caregivers here with all those folks, it's a shame because we have resources that are not being utilized. We have a fairly sophisticated counseling service. It would normally cost someone $370 to access it, but our foundation will pay for someone who needs this service. And they're doing fundraising to be able to afford this. We have support groups and we are launching into developing more robust services, if possible, to respond to this. So final slide, really final this time, and that is, thank you. Any questions, comments? And how may we partner with you?
On your survey, was that for the whole region?
We did a survey for the entire region. And what I pulled out the data for tonight was King William.
Okay, so only a few hundred.
Right, yes, sir.
And that's King William.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, and we have a statistician. She's very thorough. But she will represent, we cannot say this is representative. It's whoever responded to the survey. And so we know we distributed at the senior center and through some of our service providers. So we know it's disproportionate, perhaps, with older individuals and people receiving our services.
I know the internet's not that great in King William County, but did you put it on the web?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You can respond that way. What surprised us, though, was that most of the individuals that responded, so they get most of their information and most of their responses came through newspaper, which is totally different. And that's in the 10 counties. People were identifying newspaper as a good source of information. So.
So you have had a substantial amount of success working with social services to identify some of these people or?
No, sir. I mean, we haven't initiated anything.
Okay, well, I think that would be worthwhile presumably.
Right. And again, Mr. Ashcraft has already put us, has already connected us and has suggested that we work together on this. It is just new and we are just starting our planning for this, but your suggestion is well placed, well taken.
Questions. Thanks for the work that your organization is doing in the community. You know, I'm saying, in 10 years since I've been around, the age has come a long way from where it was. Appreciate you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the compliment.
I have a few questions, ma'am. The, to tandem on to the survey, when was that completed?
Let's see, it was December.
Last year?
December 21.
And so it has not taken into consideration the inflation that we're experiencing?
No, sir. It was complete before then. We only do a survey once every several years. And this was in November and December of 2021.
So we can assume that conditions are worse?
Well, unfortunately, I would say so, but you know, just based on my hunch.
How many, roughly, how many requests are not supported with all your resources? Do you have? Do you have opportunities you just can't meet or support?
I think most of the opportunities that we cannot meet right now, in-home care, having an aide come in, that's huge. We stopped counting and literally because calls come in every day and we can't answer. So right now, we're not even counting it anymore. What we also are getting a lot of requests where we cannot respond is when it is home repair or trying to renovate for aging in place. Though I must say, in King William, we had fewer people reporting that as a need than in most of the other counties.
Do you interact at all with habitats for humanity?
We interact with them, and yet we're doing separate projects. They're building. And in this county, we're.
Our relationship is fairly new, I think less than a year old, but we've asked them to focus on repairs versus new. And the lady, I can't remember her name, but she did mention that her last update, they had done numerous repairs. So I would suggest, and you need names and numbers, Mr. Ashcraft can help you, but I would suggest working with them as much as possible.
Absolutely.
We know that repairs are much more needed than new homes.
Exactly. Especially here, the housing stock hasn't been a big reported item or issue, but needing repairs, everybody needs them. And as folks are aging, it's more and more unaffordable. So, Mr. Ashcraft, it sounds like we're going to be having some conversations.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Hudgens, Newport News property presentation.
Good evening, gentlemen. As you're aware, a piece of property at the end of Scotland Landing Road owned by Newport News is up for sale. And so what I'd like to do with you tonight is really just share a vision of what could be, that what that property could be used for, as well as kind of the challenges, the difficulties it would be to those, for those things to come to fruition. So I've got some pictures to help get you in the right mindset, really, as well as a drawing. And really, we sat down as staff, got together and just kind of brainstormed about what it could be. And and the first thing that jumped off the page to us was a park. And this is a picture of Beaver Dam in Gloucester, kind of a similar situation with the reservoir, larger area around it, but a park comes with all things of a park. It can be canoeing, boating, picnic pavilions, campgrounds, cabins, trails of all kinds, boat launching, fishing, just all those kinds of things. And then there's, of course, you can do an event venue. There's different levels of how many people would, how much of a destination it could be. Next slide. Some mountain biking trails, York River State Park, the similar, just wooded areas and campgrounds can be cleared, they can be fully wooded. You don't need to clear a whole lot of ground to be able to put in some mountain bike trails. On a fly. This golf, likewise, you can play that in the middle of the woods. So there's kind of different levels of how much investment would have to take place to be able to use the property. We were also thinking you could have a dock, a marina, you could do jet skiing. You could have a full-scale driving range. There could even be, on this piece of property, there is space for two or three sports fields, rectangular fields, golf course, playground. Next slide. And where it could be something similar to Williams Wharf and Matthews, which hosts regattas and lots of boating events. Next slide. You wouldn't think of that sort of sport as being popular around here, but in fact, does have quite a following for these marine localities. And now is when I would like to go to a picture or the drawing from 1999, when this property was going to be both Newport News and King William owned. Someone went to the trouble of hiring some architects and engineers and drawing out the whole lot as a campground. So here is the entrance off of Scotland Landing Road. There's a whole mountain bike area over here. Trails continue. Soccer fields, two full-size and a youth-sized soccer field. Offices, maintenance, trails, walkways, elevated stairways, observation decks. So this design really took into account the topography of that piece of property. Volleyball, open pavilion, seating area. Just all kinds of different play areas and walkways and trails throughout, taking advantage of the pond that's in the middle. There's a dam right here that's blocking up that pond. And then here at the end, at that time, this was going to be Newport News Use Water Intake Facility. That is not the case anymore, so that is also area that can be used. Now, this is high up off the river, but it is open or flat land there. Adjacent property pond, but just different trails, observation areas, play areas, camp-like facilities throughout. The difficulties and challenges are with property acquisition. Obviously, we don't own this piece of property. Newport News does. They have conveyed to us their method, their process for how they're going to divest of this property. They already had a bid, which city administration accepted, but council rejected, $756,000, I believe. City council believes that they could get more money than that for it, and so they've rejected that offer. Newport News will be putting it back out to bid. They're going to be doing more advertising and going through the whole bid process for it. Besides that, the right-of-way is not assured for this piece of property. It goes through a piece of private property between state and the state maintenance and this piece of property. So that is something else to consider. As I mentioned, shoreline grading, most of this property is on a high bluff above the river. So if we wanted to take advantage of lots of boating and canoeing going off of this piece of property, we would either have to continue a roadway to where the top corner of the property, where it's less steep, or do significant grading to get down to the river level and make it more accessible for people. Of course, access infrastructure, all of these roads and trails that you see in this drawing do not exist. There are some trails cut through the woods. There are roads. I drove around it in a car. But that's about as far as they are. Newport News has, they cut down the saplings a couple times a year. And that's kind of the state that they're in. No gravel, nothing, just grassy trails. Of course, no utilities on site. If we were having this many people, we'd have to provide them with water and septic services of some kind. Working with this much, clearing this much property, of course, there'd be a number of permitting and regulatory restrictions that we'd have to get through. Puffers for the RPA for any of the water, as well as adjacent properties. Pond, dam, maintenance, that pond that I mentioned earlier and the dam that is there probably was in better state when this was drawn. At this time, it would need quite a lot of work to shore up. And of course, with a facility this size, expansion of this size, we would need to consider what kind of staffing requirements we would have to have to run something, anything on this piece of property, both in maintenance and parks and rap. So we are open to any of your comments on this piece of property.
Okay, I think everybody knows that I'm in favor of this. A lot of the hurdles here, I don't think are that major. The right-of-way, I went to the courthouse and did a little bit of title work. Certainly, the right-of-way is not stated. I think it's somewhere around 500 feet from the interstate maintenance to the edge of that property. Some of the parcels along Scotland Landing Road, if you go back far enough, it refers to Scotland Land, Scotland Landing War. So that's probably an old existing road. It would take, you know, title work and what you would do before you purchase any property anywhere. The riverbank issue, you know, that's not uncommon. I've had two waterfront parcels and cut the bluff to make it, you know, accessible. Large part of the cost. At that time, these were small lots that I had done. The material had to be hauled off, so you had to find a place for it. And that was a chunk of change there. A parcel land this big, I'm sure there's areas there that that field could probably be used. So far as the permitting process for that, it's pretty straightforward. VMRC, you know, the Corps. Somebody would have to draw the plan. It's a lot of drawbacks there, too. But so far as additional staffing, the main thing that we would need to do is acquire this property, you know, and maybe have a timeline for that. So if we just acquired this property, would we physically need any additional staffing needed?
No, sir.
That's it. I mean, I'm in favor of putting together some kind of a reasonable offer. Also, the, well, city council, as Mr. Hudgens said, they, it probably runs through waterworks. They recommend, you know, they do, they were doing the bidding process on this. And city council votes on it. Well, not only do they have to vote in favor of it, it has to be a super majority, which means, I think, what is it, eight members?
They need six out of seven.
Yeah. And this bid was, I think, 42. One individual was not there. So anyway, that's my two cents, Warren.
I was just wondering, the pictures you showed last time, there are riverfront copies further up and back. Do they, you said we don't have access, but how do they get to those?
They've got access. There is, Scotland Landing has a private lane that continues off after that.
Which that is a 50-foot easement from the end of the state maintaining road.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, because it looked like there was something there. Could we maybe go in with them? If you sold, weren't able to buy it from certain property owner that was next to it, could we maybe go in with those that's already there?
I'd have to do some research.
That survey also shows existing, what wasn't, and it meanders. At one time, it was an existing road there. The 50-foot easement shows that. And it meanders into somewhat, I don't think it would be any problem obtaining a right-of-way. It might cost a little bit of money, but the courts don't like to land like a piece of property.
That's all I'm saying. You were saying maybe it wouldn't be hard to get between this piece of property and where the end of the landing was. But if that piece of property on this side already has the road going to those houses up at the river, maybe we could join with them and come along there and why to get.
Yeah, I think there are ways to get it.
Yeah. Okay, and I like the idea, too. We've been talking, and the complaint says we want to move more about our rivers and rec areas. And we only have the one down here. This way would be more toward West Point, too. Maybe we could combine everything a little closer for the people at the other end of the counties.
Skolski.
I, I'm in favor. I, I think maybe this concept is a little bit ambitious for, you know.
It was, it was.
I think this would be in stages for quite a while. But yeah, absolutely. That's, that was, that would not be an overnight uh. You know, blow up that we could do on this piece of property, uh but, but I think uh. I think some more uh. You know, modest uses of it, uh especially at the start would, would make sense that we can. You know, something we're looking to expand is some of the people who said that they want us to expand and do is more recreational opportunities is uh, you know, I think it makes sense to pursue. I think there's probably a hard cap on how much it makes sense to pursue it. Uh, from, from a dollar standpoint, but I think it makes sense to get, get an offer together that, that we think. Uh, is manageable on our end, it's reasonable and, and see where it goes.
Mr. Hudson. Well, I'm not gonna be on the same road, apparently. Uh, in a reason being, I mean, it's a lot of them, uh because they're probably gonna come. Probably headed towards that million-dollar mark, I'm, I'm figuring myself. Uh, and it's a whole lot here to develop this, and don't think you're gonna just get those right of ways in there, because I've already had complaints that they don't want this back there now. And, and I know they don't own it, so they don't really control it, but. If you're trying to get right away from them, it, it may be up right there also. Uh, I would like to see a better, you know, more a plan. I don't see us running campground.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and staff and that kind of people. I mean, even the state campgrounds are having trouble. You know, staffing in there, they don't even have people at the front gate now. So I mean, you could ride into most of these places, so it's, it's a tough market right now. Uh. I'm wondering how the economy is doing. You know, it's a lot of things in my mind right now, what it is and, and what we're gonna put into it. And uh weigh down the road of how much it's gonna be.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I. If I still remember, our own sign is still around, what, six to seven, somewhere in that area. Uh, and have a dip down quite a bit if we're gonna do anything with it all. And, and find the right way, but that's. I'm not gonna say yes or no at this point, but uh that's where I stand, so.
Okay.
I, I need a lot more thought into it and, and a little more planning in at least the initial and, and. I don't see us operating the campground.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, a marina is definitely needed, but with its support, I don't, I don't, I, I guess you need to do a survey at Rainbow Acres or somewhere like that. To see what kind of uh activity they're getting there, not the campground, but as far as people coming in, but fuel and that type of thing, that's what you're gonna. Be able to sell here is that, unless you're actually doing a launch and, and if you can charge for that. And it's, that's about all that I really have to say at this point, but.
My opinion, Mr. Hudson, is this is a unique opportunity, once in a lifetime. If we don't take advantage of it, it's lost forever. So I'm, I'm geared towards, let's put something together. I assume times of the essence. Do we have any idea when bids will go out or?
They didn't give us a date, but I know they're putting that together soon.
Soon as in month or less.
Yes, within a month or so.
But this, this.
They'll put the advertising.
Yeah, it's not there. Yeah.
Yeah, but this uh rendition is far and above what we saw as a blob of land with. Topographic data, and that was about it. This gives you some really good concepts as to what could be done. No, we don't need to be operating campground, but we can offer. Some nice things with the county growing. This, and the limited land that we have in the current Parks and Rec Center up there, gotta go somewhere. And being, what, it's roughly halfway between Central Garage and West Point, right?
Yes.
So it's, it's ideal. As far as developing it, there are any number of grants available through the PDCs. USDA, all of those can be pursued. Doesn't have to all be on the backs of King William.
With a fifty percent match, I think, if it qualifies, and, and some of them out there solely for recreation.
Exactly, yeah.
There's a lot of different grants.
So what do we need now? Just a nod to pursue it?
I think that is what we need, and we can uh kind of discuss what would be an appropriate kind of offer and kind of put some more numbers together. What's the immediate future?
Have something by the next meeting?
We can do that.
At least some. Okay, any other discussion? Comments? Thank you.
Sure.
Next, we have the Department of Social Services Budget Amendment, Ms. Brown.
Good evening.
Good.
Resolution twenty-two dash seventy-three is presented for the board's consideration to approve a budget amendment for the Department of Social Services. Additional funding is available from the state for several programs. It was not part of the initial FY twenty twenty-three state budget allocation. The total of twenty-six thousand three twenty-eight for COVID-related, no local match with that. And an additional nine hundred dollars for local staff and operations for family partnership with a fifteen and a half local match. Um, staff recommends resolution twenty-two dash seventy-three to appropriate funds for expenditures.
Any questions, comments? Straightforward, Ms. Brown?
Straightforward.
I can entertain a motion, Todd.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two dash seventy-three.
Have a motion and properly seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Branch, call roll.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. And we have the fourth quarter finance update, Ms. Brown.
So included in the agenda packet this evening is an overall, an overview financial report for year-end FY twenty twenty-two. Overall, the revenues exceeded the anticipated amounts. Factors of the revenues that came in over-anticipated are. Building and planning revenues for permit and application fee, it was an additional eighty-four thousand three hundred. Courthouse fines revenues, which are made up of county sheriff fines, courthouse maintenance charges, and courthouse security. An additional thirty thousand forty. Penalties and interest on taxes increase. As a result of contracted collection agency on delinquent taxes, we're looking at an additional five hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred sixty-one. Taxes on recreation and wills, an additional one hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred seventy-six. Um, and basically, if you look at those factors that we, we just discussed, those are really hard to anticipate what we're going to do. So we did well. Then overall, the actual expenditures are below the anticipated expenses. Factors of the expenses less than anticipated are. Public safety, which consists of sheriff E nine one one, animal control and fire and EMS, less than budget by a total of five hundred seventy-seven hundred and twelve. Legal fees for the county attorney, less than budget by a hundred and fifteen thousand five forty-nine. Local shared TSA, less than budget fifty-two thousand four nineteen. Electoral board and officials, less budget by fifty-three thousand three hundred fifty-seven due to no requirement for a June primary. Planning department, less than budget eighty thousand four oh nine. FY twenty-two, the department was fully staffed and no longer needed, no longer needed contract labor. The contingency amount was budgeted for seventy-five thousand. We used forty-six thousand three ninety-four. And then we'll go to capital projects completed in FY twenty-two includes repairs to HVAC at various county properties. Lease purchase of three interceptors for the sheriff's office. Lease purchase of one medic and one engine. The anticipated uh date for the service of the engine is this fall, later this fall. Fencing around soccer field at the three sixty complex, gravel at three sixty complex, lawn mower purchase for park complex. Life packs purchased for fire and EMS, three sixty complex renovations and roofing projects. Fifty-three thousand of the FY twenty-two set aside funds for capital was rolled forward for the FY twenty-three capital budget. And in the next few months, we will present a request to roll forward funds for use for possible additional capital needs. The Proffers Fund has increased in FY twenty-two by one hundred ninety thousand nine eighty-five. And FY twenty-two, two hundred thousand was committed to fund FY twenty-two capital projects such as life packs, gravel at three sixty complex. Um, radio replacements, which will roll that, we did not complete that radio replacement FY twenty-two, but we intend to. Uh, work with both fire and EMS and sheriff and, and spend that this year, which we rolled forward. Proffers cash is collected from developers to go towards public facilities and infrastructure needs to serve the new developments. Just a kind of a little note, a lot of people are wondering what is that? We cannot, am I correct, legally require it, but. Cherry, they can go ahead and give that to us. The Water and Sewer Fund makes up the utilities funds. There has been growth in both funds in FY twenty-two. Water increased to five hundred and twenty-one thousand four seventy-one. Water revenues consist of water usage, water connections, and meter sales. Sewer increase of seven hundred sixty-one thousand eight hundred ninety. Sewer revenues consist of sewer connection charges. And we do intend to hopefully be able to use some of this, the fund balance in the utility funds. To offset the costs for our water project too, that we're working with um. Jimmy Sanderson on getting a, a bond for that too later this spring. And then the ARPA funds have been appropriated for the funding we've received. The county expended a total of four hundred thirty-eight thousand sixty-five. From March third, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Keep in mind, that's how that budget is working for ARPA. Annual reporting has been submitted as requested, and the county has received both first and second half of, of funding. And we have deposited those funds into a separate bank account from our county operating account. Social Services. Was locally funded per original budget appropriation in FY twenty-two. No additional funds were needed for the budget. That wraps it up, and now if you guys have any questions.
What have we reconciled to it? What date have we reconciled to at this point, and how would that affect these figures that you're giving us?
The reconciliations have been completed through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and it's been turned over to our auditing firm for. The financing for twenty twenty-one. We are now working, starting in July twenty twenty-one. Through June twenty twenty-two, we have to get through that. Um.
So that's why some of those figures ain't in about right there.
Yeah, yeah, and those numbers are unaudited. That we just spoke about, actually, too. Uh, yes, we. There's possibility. Um, I don't know if you noticed, in the revenue summary from FY twenty twenty-one, we did have nine, ninety-three thousand dollars that the auditing firm. We, it was never, we were never able to identify it um as why the revenue actually was in our bank account. And the auditors were fine with us just taking that in as a revenue and moving forward with it.
Uh, we're not looking back and saying taxpayer didn't pay his taxes. We don't know where it came from.
And it was very possible. It was ninety-three thousand dollars after uh netted everything down.
What were the uh sewer hookup uh connection? What was that, seven hundred thousand? But I kind of lost track.
The sewer, we're, um, we increased our fund balance to seven sixty-one, eight ninety. Uh, let's see, where are we at right now? Did you want to know what we charge per connection?
Yeah, that.
Eight, eight thousand.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, we're at one point eight. As a fund balance, as of um for the sewer fund alone. It just continues to grow. At this point, we don't have expenses that go against that fund.
And we can use part of that for the uh water tower?
Yes.
Part of that funding?
Yeah.
And that's, that's the plan, correct?
We consider that an enterprise fund, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
These, these are very helpful, by the way. I feel like we instituted this. Or you instituted it. Next up, we have Chief Reeves.
I'll be leaving off, if that's okay.
Okay.
Public Protection Classification, PPC, uh used to be known as the ISO, and it is. How insurances set their rates um based on the safety classification of the district. Um, so we have uh asked uh Bear Risk to go ahead and do one of these PPC evaluations. And you can only do them in certain times. Uh, that would be when we increase uh buyer staffing or if our. Water sources, our public water increases. Um, so since we have an increase in staff and increase in where our water is going in District One. Um, they are going to be doing that evaluation, so it doesn't matter if we do a new delineation of districts or not, we're getting that new classification. But as we are, we're looking at, are these the best district delineations? Um, one of the things that stuck out to us is that uh most of the time, it's the middle of a roadway that is being used as the border. Between two districts right now, and if District One. Insurance rates drop because they get this new classification. It's gonna be hard to justify that somebody's rate drops and the guy across the street does not. Um, so that is the thinking behind. Uh, taking a look at these delineations. Um, we can go about this a couple of different ways. We could just say, okay, that is the problem. Uh, let's take every address on that road and move it into one district or the other, as well as any side streets that come off of that. And in general, keep the same district. Or we could go about it a little more comprehensively and uh try and go out and do. Time, really, time to different places and make sure that's as fair as it can be between the different stations. Um. The savings, the insurance rates uh can drop or can give, uh their rates is widely varying. Um, I've seen some numbers, it could be between ten or sixty percent uh rate drop.
Who you're doing this study for the INJOKM?
I believe it is only District One, because District One is the only one that got the, the station changed. Is that correct? Because of the staffing change there.
What are the physical boundaries of District One? Is it, did you say it was a road? Not District One, Station One, I guess is what you have there. So is that a road?
Right now, it is mostly river road.
River road, that would be, okay.
A-land drive area.
North, what would that be?
North, that is still river road.
Between, no, between, well, between District uh Station One and Station Two, that line between the blue and the gray. And Enfield Road along Elliside, I assume. Okay.
It's true, we can't get uh the evaluation for all the districts. It's only the district that had the change in the staffing.
True. In the past, the uh studies were done based on. Um. You pay in for somebody to come out and do it, it's no longer done that way. The insurance companies take care of it themselves. So they have a organization called Bearist, and you have to be uh approved for the study. And you have different types of criteria you have to meet for the study. So when you meet that criteria, they'll come out and do the study. Uh, Mangahack hasn't really changed in their water supply. They don't have career staffing. Um, seven is still the same, and number three may actually be able to do their own study. Because they've had some increase in staffing, and they've added hydrants to their system, so they may hit that. Um, basically, as a county, we could request that they come out, do a study for all the fire districts. But they're only gonna do a study in the areas where there, these changes have occurred. So they'll come out and they'll do Station One's first, this first new district, and anything that is affected by that. So uh. We're not real sure exactly how that, that there's, there's lots of different aspects of this study, so we. So when you start talking about boundaries and 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 things like that, we're not sure as to how that funnels out or. But you know, filters out because if you're in Central Garage on three sixty, you've got hydrants everywhere. If you're down West River Road. You've got twenty-four, seven staffing, but you don't have water. So they're going to get a different rating right there. Than what they would on three sixty. So it, it's really a, they, they take a look at everything. And when they come in, they literally tear you apart. They look at your training. Don't want me to run through it.
Okay, alright. So I mean, is there anything else that you guys want to ask about a particular aspect of it?
Couldn't this be used also to develop a requirements or needs assessment? You, you're lacking in this particular area and and. Station two's area. And that helps justify the need to expend dollars and look for grants and et cetera, et cetera, instead of just not knowing.
Well, I think that the study's not based on, uh, well, it's not provided to help us determine what we need to do. It's done to determine what we're capable of providing in the specific area that we're in.
But if you do A, you get B.
Right. So it could, it could guide us on, we need this over here. But then there are some, some things, some aspects of this that we just can't. Take care of. You know, we can't just put municipal water throughout the entire county, so.
So since y'all asked for the station one only, does West Point do their own?
They can. We didn't ask. Yeah, they can ask for their own. So the way it works is every individual department can go and ask for their own study. Which I suggest that if, if they've had a change, that they do that. We asked upfront to do the entire county. And the advice that we were given was to not do that. Because they're probably going to turn down the study for the areas that have not changed. There's no point doing a study. If your score's not going to change, it's their perspective. And they're, they're footing bill for it as well.
Yeah, in, in those other areas, what they, what the insurance companies normally is, is how far or are you away from a firehouse? And that's how they determine your rate. But this would be, if water is available, say from a fire hydrogen. Those people would definitely deserve a lower rate than just how far, you know, are you away from a firehouse?
Yeah, I mean, they, they look at several different things, but there's like three, three primary areas that Steve's want to discuss with you. Want to talk about them real quick. So, so emergency communications is one. How do you get the call? Can you support somebody calling nine one one and getting the alert out to your providers, whether it's career, volunteer? So there are lots of different facets that go into that, which I feel like pretty confidently that we meet most of those requirements already. So it's not going to be a big deal. Then the fire department, they break that down into the type and extent of training for the personnel. The number of people who participate in training, the firefighter response, the maintenance and testing of fire departments equipment. And then they talk about water supply and community risk reduction. And all these have different percentages in the score. Um, community risk and reduction is fairly new. It's a lower score, it's like five percent. But the other parts of it, the water supply is forty points, uh, staffing is fifty points. So those two big points in that study are why they approved coming out and doing study. Uh, the A-land District.
Here is, so like you said, the Station One, they can get to this. I don't understand how they can get all the way down River Road on the. Side toward the river, but they can't get to anybody in the Mango Heck area. Why does it extend so far that way?
That's the sort of anomaly that we're looking at to say that this might not be.
Oh, correct.
The best delineation.
I was wondering who came up with this, them or?
No, I, I believe the previous fire chief um did that. I'm not sure if it was brought to your attention at that time. I don't know.
Right. Do you know what year it was?
It's twenty seventeen.
Oh, that's twenty.
Um, but that's, that's kind of.
I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't know if it was ever brought to you. Um, that's kind of. The direction we're looking for is to what extent would you like us to redelineate? And what are your kind of uh concerns about delineation?
I guess the first one that would be is, it's probably better to cut off River Road there and give it to two, but is that going to hurt two even more?
Well, that goes into, you have to take into consideration what people like. And you leave Station One and get all the way up to whatever.
Yeah, on six hundred versus, versus Darrell or Herring Creek.
Okay.
Oh, if you look at that. He said, I was pretty cheap. We all knew this. And we actually sat down and looked at timelines based on this. It actually, we did have this section get cut already to where it was. It actually took him while. And it's shorter time to go because we got. They got a reach out. Now, as far as one being, I guess, based on doors, where's the county on this end? It actually, we actually got the crew to go for it, particularly Station One, but the district line never, I guess. The district line never changed. It just stayed how it was. So in terms, we actually all said, but we still had down here and like you're looking to look right here of Mount Columbia Road off of that middle. That, that is a whole side road. And they actually had to go in our district, they choose districts to get there. But we were never required, that little bit of road to go to, it was on that side of the, that's the road. Which all the other days, it takes a three minutes to get there and Station One probably ten minutes. But it was left, left alone right foot. So this was all, I got it calculated when I was a first chief and we did it on a timeline. Where can we go, how can we do it? They had more people than we did, but like they were just.
And is this purely for fire? It doesn't, that doesn't involve EMS?
Yeah. Purely not.
I think it's warranted, the study.
Like you said, we can't delineate. The person that will do it will decide where the delineation goes, right? We don't have any control.
No, it's county.
Oh, county will do. I thought you said state.
No, no, no. They're going to do the study no matter what.
They'll do the study by those lines.
But whatever lines that we set. Right now, those are the lines they're going to use unless we tell them differently.
I thought you said when they redid it, they would change because it might help.
You just need another correction.
Oh, I just wanted to know if there were any other concerns, that's all. And we'll continue.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Water tower bond reimbursement, Mr. Hudgens.
This uh. Reimbursement resolution uh was drawn up by our attorneys. Um, this is. Uh, just to allow the county to reimburse itself from a bond. If we indeed take out a bond for this project. So right now, those charges are coming out of utilities for the design. As the design is continuing for the water line extension and the water tower. Uh, but there's a limit of sixty days prior to a reimbursement resolution like this, for which we can reimburse ourselves for those. So we would like to go ahead and uh ask you to approve this resolution to be able to reimburse ourselves. This does not obligate us to take out a bond or to make payments. It only allows us to reimburse ourselves if we do take a bond. For expenses that we're generating right now for the design of the tower.
I guess I got just one question. I, I was under the understanding that the water fund was going to cover this.
Yes, that is, all of our conversations with Jimmy Sanderson have been, we want to structure this bond. So that water and sewer utilities takes care of it. And that so far has always been said, yes, this is how we're going to do it.
Not the funds in the, in the account now, but as.
Right, yes, exactly.
Yeah, okay, now I'm with.
Yes.
Cause I misunderstood. I think I thought we were paying it straight up out of this.
Oh, we're not. We're paying, we're just not, we can't pay for the whole thing. We don't have enough in the, in the, in the account to, to pay for it all at one shot.
Alright, I'm good. Only question I have, on line sixteen, we have uh an amount of nine million, one hundred sixty-two thousand. And on line thirty-eight, it's a different figure. It's, it's only eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars difference between the two. I, I don't know where the difference lies. That uh bond's expected on thirty line.
Yeah, I see it.
It's just a small difference, but it's eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars difference. So we think both of those numbers would be the same.
What's that being the maximum on third line thirty-seven?
Yeah, but it's still only eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Has determined that the project will require estimated funding of approximately, so he just rounded it up. Whereas this one.
I, I was just thinking that the resolution should, the, the amount should be the same, but maybe, I don't.
I would suggest we make it uh line thirty-eight the same as line sixteen.
Yeah, I think, I think that needs to happen.
But li- line thirty-eight might be the more important line.
Right, that's all.
Because that, that's calculated too, but in exact opposite. Right, that came off of what we had uh had a projected scope estimated. So I would say if we're gonna, I, I wouldn't mind what how it is because you're making it very clear that it's estimated approximately nine one one six two. And then you are then stating the expected principal amount of the bond.
Which is on, only a difference of eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Sure. But again, if you're going to change it, I would change like line sixteen to match thirty-eight.
Yeah, I, I just think they both need to match.
I don't think they necessarily do the way it's worded, but if we're going to change it, that, I think that's.
Number of people.
Because as we go along, we're probably going to go back. Yeah, so.
This, this all has to do with, these are the numbers that we have right now, our best estimates. Again, which leads me to, I don't think it really matters.
No, but if it's an issue, I'd say go with thirty-eight, like, like you said.
Was the consensus changed to thirty-eight?
It, it, I just brought it to y'all's attention. I just, yeah, but, yeah, whatever.
I'm in agreement with you.
Either way.
I think we're good with the way, that way we don't have to have an R on a resolution.
Okay, in further discussion, questions?
I'll move approval of the resolution.
Oh, should they second it, Ms. Branch? I'm sorry, they further discussion, Ms. Branch.
Hi.
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 Hi. Yeah, Ms. Branch, you're up for Operation Green Light.
The National Association of Counties is urging everyone to participate in a new national collaborative. To support military veterans and raise awareness about the unique challenges faced by them. And the resources that are available at the county, state and federal level to assist them. As part of Operation Green Light, if King William County participated, our government buildings would be illuminated green. From November seventh through the thirteenth. In addition to lighting county buildings, county buildings, residents and businesses are encouraged to participate by changing one light bulb in their house to a green bulb. By shining a green light, we let our veterans know that they're seen, appreciated and supported. While this event is focused around the week of Veterans Day, participants are encouraged to continue shining the light year round. And at this time, I'm just bringing this forward to see if you would like to um bring a resolution forward at the next meeting. To adopt an order for the county to participate in Operation Green Light for veterans.
Do we have a logistics plan in place there and waiting for approval?
I spoke with um facilities just to make sure that it's actually possible to light the county buildings. And they said that they would do whatever was necessary to make it happen.
And that can happen at courthouse also?
Yes, it would be at all county buildings.
I, I of course love it, so.
I agree.
Okay, so you have a approval to go ahead and present it at the next meeting?
Yes.
Great. Excellent. Okay, gentlemen, uh, who did I start with last time?
You don't remember.
What's going on? Must have been Mr. Gar.
Oh, now I get punished, right?
You open your mouth.
Yeah. Well, I'm good at that. Uh, I'd like to uh maybe revisit the boat landing on Dabney's Mill Road. I know a couple of years ago, Mr. Ashcraft, you weren't here, uh, the then county administrator had, had a conversation with uh DWR. With maybe going into a po- a partnership there to do something. That piece of property is just sitting there. It's been another summer this past. Also, uh, I would like to maybe start that conversation again about Commerce Park. Maybe the possibility of letting uh EDA get involved in that. Uh, I don't know how the board feels about it, but maybe we can have a conversation about it anyway. But that's, that's pretty much it.
Mr. Hudgens?
Jumping over, flipping around, okay. Uh, not a whole lot. I just wanted my Mr. Ashcraft. The situation at F W Landfield is still the old situation. It's more, more fifty-five gallon drums there, but it's still piling up and there's no word to put you on. And I, I can foresee people, and I hate to say it, but people dumping it somewhere. And the only other thing is, is uh that, then you, thing I, I think has been passed by Virginia State Government. Uh, for veterans, the tax and temp program uh for fifty-five and older, I think is a, a, a great thing that they get. Starts out at a ten thousand dollar exemption, then it goes to twenty, then it goes thirty, and I think it tops out at forty. And that's all I had.
Mr. Muskowski.
Um, at some point in time before the year's out, I would like to get uh in, in conjunction with our partners at all points. The comprehensive presentation on um how we plan to close out this broadband project from getting construction going. Where, when, how, timelines, how things are moving along. Uh, still get a lot of questions about it. I know that there's still a lot. I know we just, just kind of got the final steps of the preliminary stuff done. But, you know, as soon as practical and hopefully, but again, before the year's out, I'd like to um. Have them here and, and get a presentation so we can start sharing information with the public about what they can expect.
I agree with.
That brought up a good point, like, you know, it's something that maybe Mr. Moore, you mentioned when you first came on, you men- mentioned like a clipboard or. Some kind of a board that had all projects that we've been talking about over the past few years, like Sweet Sue. The real landfills and all these projects. We like that we sometimes forget the way some of these things are, how withstanding they are. And then we forget about it. And we went, oh, didn't we talk about that? Maybe we could get some kind of a list of everything that we've done. And where it stands. Might just be kind of a board.
Sure, it's on, it's on whiteboards from several offices in the building, but yeah, maybe something that's more visible.
And that way the citizens could see it and they could understand, know more about what's going on. It gives more visibility. That's all I had. You go and keep doing the things you've been doing. And maybe, I don't know, if we stopped doing the library or gave up on that.
No, it's just a matter of.
Right. That's just another.
Um, to.
Oh, okay. Just to prove it next one.
To uh follow on, Ms. Muskowski, we uh, we're in the contractual obligation period for all points to start dumping information to us. Hopefully soon, uh, we'll start seeing some more information and timelines. We, everybody gets pinged, so. Uh, on a positive note, Mr. Hudgens and I had a telecom with Breeze Line on Friday afternoon. And why that's important is because, as most of you know, they won the ARDOF, the, the Rural Broadband Opportunity Fund through the. Federal Communications Commission. That's a segment of King William that is mostly northwest. Um, all points, I would say is, I'm sorry, northeast. Uh, all points is more northwest of their sector, but the FCC did finally grant Breeze Line their. Their request, their, their grant. So without getting into some sensitive details. Uh, they did acknowledge, they, they're working on a timeline and more details. It's contingent on some other. Uh, pending contracts in the, in the vicinity, but we're starting to sew things up as far as broad, broadband's concerned for King William. Uh, that's about all we can say for now, but. That's about all we can say for now, but we will be hitting all points harder on getting some information.
And are their contracts?
Yes, they're obligated. Maybe Mr. Hudgens and I can generate some, a white paper of sorts as to where we are and what we're doing. Cause just a Facebook post this afternoon, as a matter of fact, indicated that a lot of people don't have a clue what's going on.
Mr. Chair, I, you, you prompted a, a question I had from Mr. Miskowski's resident Sandy Point. Are they under any of this? As far as, should they be signing up, calling in? That was a question.
So he's, Mr. Hudgens is one of the first ones to sign up. He's at the end of the.
All points.
So sack, sign up, and yeah, the answer, that's what I'm.
And again, the first year of all points, that a grant, regardless of how far the residence or, or business is from the middle mile, the main line, they are obligated to bill to that residence. So it's, it's, you have to get people to be aware that if they're hesitant and they live a considerable distance off the road. They need to make a decision real quick.
I think that's where they were at. He knows what I'm talking about.
Okay, the ARDOF is similar, similar requirements. They are obligated to bill regardless of the distance.
But you have to let them know, and within the twelve months, or else you forfeit it, and then you have to pay for it all round.
And then we have several discount programs, like, the name of them, Ms. Branch, the, the discount service program that you posted for me. Anyways, it's both Breeze Line and All Points, and I'm pretty sure Cox, if you need some help with your internet service. They, there's a, a, a discount that you can apply for, and there's some other things coming online as well that will, will help out those trying to get broadband. With that, we're gonna go ahead and go into closed meeting, if I could get a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to convene and close meeting in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight three of the Code of Virginia to discuss the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, because discussion in an open meeting may adversely affect bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board. In accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight eight of the Code of Virginia to consult legal counsel on a specific legal matter regarding the office, the treasurer requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel. And in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight seven of the Code of Virginia to consult legal counsel, consultants, and or staff on a matter of actual litigation in which the county is involved, because discussion in an open meeting may adversely affect the litigation position or negotiating strategy of the board.
I have a motion to convene and close session with properly second. Any further discussion, Ms. Branch?
Hi.
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 Hi, we're now in closed session. Hold the meeting back in session.
Move, we reconvene the meeting in open session.
Second.
Motion is seconded, Ms. Branch.
Hi.
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 Mr. Chair, that's our one.
Motion seconded, Ms. Branch.
Hi.
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 Hi, and gentlemen, do we have any actions pending? I don't believe so.
I'm working with the chairman. I'll move the chairman in that case.
Motion then properly second was Branch.
Hi.
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 Hi, thank you, gentlemen.